Meeting of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mrs. Foyle?
Here.
Ms. Strummer?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Brown? Here. You can have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is a stand alone nation under God, indivisible, with mercy and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I believe we received several via email. Kevin, if you could read those for us, please?
Sure. We received the four public comments being emailed. First is from Liz Bradford. Dear CUSD 201 school board, I await for a statement from any of the current school board members regarding the events that took place at the June 16th, 2020 meeting. In the eyes of the CUSD 201 parent and others to whom I've spoken to, there are many conversations among certain board members about how a transition period should or should not go. Conversations and plans were clearly made. The community members have voted all due in conclusion to your position of the right to know more information regarding these secretly secret conversations. If the community is to trust those serving in behalf of the families attending the schools you serve, I expect to state the public impression that there are quite a few private conversations. As I understand it, this is not proper for a call for elected officials. Therefore, I watched, behavior I watched live on June 16th, 2020 is discreet, is very untrustworthy. Next public comment is from Mike. It's P R E T E three, three. District 201 school board members and administration. I ran this email due to the current unfortunate situation that has occurred and hope that the board can begin to turn a new leaf. Myself and other community members have concerns and issues that need being addressed, and I believe that changes are in order and the time to start is now. First, the long extended hours of closed sessions needs to end. Closed sessions deserve teacher, student discipline, and maybe one or two other reasons. It's not a place for debate on issues once the community and students are affected or on topics in which to vote or community feedback is needed. We elect you and you are accountable to us. It is our right to hear your debates and be able to question and give feedback. A whole conversation without public going where their elected official stand is preposterous. As an elected official myself, I understand the difficult decisions that need to be made from time to time. However, as unpopular as they may be, those decisions need to be known and transparent. The open sessions of school board meetings need contain these debates and conversations for all to hear, so in turn, we can either hold you accountable for your decision or raise questions or give feedback. I hope the current changes within the board will make this happen. Second, school board meetings need have an open mic session for the community to bring questions and receive answers. The way it's done now does not develop trust and transparency with the community and doesn't allow for direct rebuttal to obtain your receipt. New questions may arise out of the answer given from the board. Back and forth emails between one person and the board is destructive and a waste of time. While it may be great for the one person to get the answer, what about the other community members that have an interest in that topic? There are a lot of times when a good question is asked, a solid answer should be given, but the board doesn't answer correctly. This community should have the right to publicly ask these questions and get answers in real time. Furthermore, I understand Robert's rule of order and use it one month for my meeting and if you use it one month for my meeting. It does not allow, does allow for open question and answer session. Those options should be fully explored and analyzed. The school board needs to enter into this new check or review figure as there are a lot of obstacles that stand in the way at this time. I'm finished with me completing the decisions that need to be made that have been on hold for too long. We all have a voice, each one of you school board members and community. It's time we're all heard, our input is considered, and not pushed aside because it doesn't coincide with whatever one particular member of the board thinks. These purposeful actions can go a long way to obtain true transparency and build trust with the community of elected officials. I would thank you strongly and sincerely for taking these steps.
I'm getting some feedback from here to be louder.
Okay. Next is Dana Hajek. Hello, Kevin, I have public comment for this evening, this meeting. I combined three comments into one email below. Thank you to the board for starting a discussion about how they can respond to and discuss public comments made at board meetings. Dialogue between the board of community is imperative to our district, to our success as a district. I would encourage the board to remind the community of the current policy of distrust of public comments that means as it seems some may have expected their comments to be addressed specifically at the last board meeting. It may also be useful for the board to present the current policies regarding email correspondence. Our board members are allowed to respond to these communications. What should the public view of their not receiving in response to communication other than wait for the next meeting of a public comment? And hopefully that board will communicate, probably will be appointing applicants to two vacant positions on the board. Transparency within this process is key. If there are more applicants in positions, how will the board distinguish between who will fill vacancies and who will not? With this being a board voted appoint, with this being a board voted appointment, I hope the community is made aware of the criteria being used to make this decision. I'm under the impression that the board must prove all plans for how to return to school. I would strongly urge the board not to overlook the need for students to have movement throughout today. Any plan that does not include this should not be approved until this decision is addressed. And then the final comment is from Melanie Sleeper. Dear Mr. Carey, CUSD 201 board members, I'm reaching out on behalf of many of the school district's parents and community members to ask a number of questions to which I believe would entail two answers. At the April 28th meeting, Mr. Armstrong addressed the topic of transition very briefly. Mr. Armstrong wanted to make the community aware that the March 10th special board meeting had discussions in place regarding board transition. He stated that the board is considering appointing new officers and have senior officers stepped down, with Mrs. Charlton replied, the discussion would continue at the June board meeting. Long as the board all agreed that it would be addressed, as long as everyone was given the opportunity to participate. At the June 16th meeting, there was no real discussion. It appeared that Mrs. Charlton, Mrs. Wilson, and the general public were not given any knowledge about the transition plan ever considered. What happened was not a discussion, it was a plan put together prior to the meeting. There was no clear presentation of what transition would look like or alternative ideas to address. I was shocked at how little conversations were placed. I believe Mrs. Wilson's exact words were, if there is a transition plan and certainly don't know what it is, it's imperative for the community for us to vote on topic, given there's been no information about it. This should not have been acted on from the June 16th meeting. Historically, the school board requires a great deal of information presented to them prior to voting on major changes. Major presentations are prepared over the course of weeks, sometimes months by teachers, administrators, staff, students, PTOs, parents, and community members. The school district demands all of the facts prior to taking on changing things drastically. Would it be fair for those I listed above to expect the same with the school board? This lack of communication transparency has been a matter. During the June 16th meeting, Mr. Price said January was supposed to be the president. How did Mr. Price know this? Where and when was this discussed? I do not recall seeing a formal transition plan laid out in detail for the community in an open meeting prior. Was this discussion not at a board meeting? Additionally, if the intent was to have junior officers assume officer positions, why weren't Mrs. Strummer or Mrs. Foyle put the role of president? My previous email on June 16th, I called this topic the vacant switch, and that is exactly what happened. All of the servers know the truth, even if it requires some of all of our, some or all of our board members being a bit vulnerable about how this is, this open seat plan was formed, why it happened, and take accountability for their actions. Until then, the community at large seemed to be united and thought that the school board did not have the best intentions of students, teachers, staff, and parents. I strongly urge the board to address the issues of the district meeting as soon as possible.
We're gonna have to talk way louder. We're gonna have to shout, I think. Maybe conserve having to cover our asses. I've heard this thing before. Just wanted to just stay up.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Brian Dunn, long-term substitute, Westmont High School. Dan Wolf, increase in FTE from point eight to one point oh, physical education at Westmont High School. Claudia Padilla, one point oh FTE, Miller dual language. Rainie Kaplan, Westmont High School Athletic Director. Ben Ariano, volunteer football coach, Westmont High School. Does anyone want any of those items pulled for individual consideration?
I do not.
Any discussion on those topics?
Go move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Strummer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the information discussion section of the board meeting, and the first topic is board statement on transition and expectations moving forward. Laura will share a statement that I think represents the board majority, and then after that, I will open, I will make some comments after that, and then I will open the floor for any additional comments that any board member may want to contribute. You want to go ahead?
Thanks, Joel. And just to be really clear with the public after hearing the public comments specifically, this statement was reviewed openly by all board members and considered the input of all board members. It was approved by a board majority. District 201 community members, on June 16th, the Board of Education voted to amend the terms of the current board officer positions and to elect new officers. We encourage your feedback and understand that for some, this change came as a surprise. While this was discussed in open session on March 10th and also mentioned at the April 28th meeting, we realized this was not sufficient to inform and prepare the community. We want to apologize for the lack of transparency. That was not our intent. Laura, you can't be louder. Sorry. Yeah, should I reread the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Rereading the whole thing being louder, and I'm actually gonna move closer, just in case that helps. So, I just wanted to restate, this statement that I'm gonna read was reviewed by all of the current board members, input was received, and adjustments were made, and then it was approved by the board majority. District 201 community members, on June 16th, the Board of Education voted to amend the terms of the current board officer positions and to elect new officers. We have heard your feedback, and we understand that for some, this change came as a surprise. While this was discussed in open session on March 10th and also mentioned at the April 28th meeting, we realized this was not sufficient to inform and prepare the community. We want to apologize for the lack of transparency. That was not our intent. Also, we want to assure the public that this, that while this did not come across as transparent as it should have, the board did follow ISBE regulations and acted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act throughout. It is the duty of the board to govern itself. The intent of this change is to position the board and the district for future success. While there were many paths the board could have taken, it was the decision of the board majority that immediate change would be most beneficial. It was our hope to make this change without the loss of any of the talent that the past officers brought to the board table, and we regret sincerely that things did not turn out that way. We want to reassure all of you that our plans to continue to strengthen the district will move forward. We are committed to being transparent and to not only listening to your feedback, but actively soliciting it. We invite you to continue to hold us accountable for representing your views and, of course, the interests of the students of District 201. Thank you for your commitment to District 201. We are stronger because of all of you and your willingness to share your voices with us. In service, the CUSD Board of Education.
School boards are comprised of seven members, seven members. Each member with an equal responsibility, equal voice, and equal vote to the decision-making process of school governance. No board member has more say in board matters than another. This includes board officers. We listen to all points of view, even when we know we do not share in a specific line of thinking being presented. All decisions are made by consensus or vote, and the majority always decides. We are obligated to abide by majority decisions. Many times, we agree unanimously, and occasionally, we do not. When we don't agree, it can be disappointing to be in the minority, but part of a board member's oath is to work through constructive channels towards a different outcome. For quite some time, our former board president expressed frustrations with certain aspects and duties of the board president's office. The board discussed these concerns on numerous occasions, but did not fully share the board president's perspective. The conversations became repetitive, unproductive, and were not constructive towards an outcome. The president's vision for our district leadership grew to be at odds with that of the board majority. In a February closed session, frustrations boiled over when administrators were accused of not following through on a rather non-urgent, inconsequential matter of district business. Board members were upset by the accusation and timing, given the family crisis the superintendent was challenged with, and board members were upset by the manner information was gathered, leading to the accusation. A tipping point was reached, and the need for some sort of board structural change became evident. In a situation that presents as this did, it is the board that must take responsibility for itself, police itself, and bring resolution. That resolution played out over the next several meetings. Trying to be sensitive to the nature of the conversation, the board chose to discuss the concept of a board officer transition plan at an untelevised meeting on March 10th. That discussion took place in open session. Two board officers agreed with the transition plan, one did not. A solid majority of board members expressed support for the transition. The board officer transition topic was requested to be placed on the April 28th published board docs agenda. That request and repeat requests went unresponded to by the board president. The transition topic had to be verbally added to the open session agenda during the meeting on the 28th by Mr. Armstrong. Brief comments about the transition were made. Final discussion and vote occurred at the June 10th open meeting. While there were a few unintended modifications to the transition plan as originally discussed, the intent of this change is to strengthen the board superintendent relationship particularly for board members who service extends beyond the 2021 general election. I believe this change will allow the board to set a more positive direction in beating the challenges we now face and maintaining the successful path our district is on. Anybody else have additional comments or thoughts?
Tonight, you heard a state of board statement about the recent events that occurred with the board. While I do not agree with the entire statement, I would like to tell you now what my thoughts are and share them with the community. On March 10th, 2019, there was a special meeting of the Board of Education for the specific purpose of the financial workshop. It was not recorded or televised. At this meeting, Mr. Armstrong brought up the topic of board transitioning. At the June 16th meeting, Marie Charlton said that Gary Armstrong called her during the day of the March 10th meeting and told her the board officers were going to be replaced, and he had the majority of the votes to make it happen. Judy, I have to be louder. Where should I start over at? I feel like I'm shouting. They said something that started over. Start over. Okay, sorry, Judy. Just make sure you get on. On March 10th, 2019, there was a special meeting of the board for the specific purpose of the financial workshop. It was not recorded or televised. At this meeting, Mr. Armstrong brought up the topic of board transitioning. At the June 16th board meeting, Marie Charlton said that Gary Armstrong had called her during the day of the March 10th meeting and told her the board officers were going to be replaced, and he had the majority of votes to make it happen. How could this be? The board hadn't even had the conversation yet. There was a heated exchange on March 10th, but it's apparent that there were other discussions before that date. Mrs. Strummer was present at the beginning of the meeting, but left early to attend her daughter's school event. When this supposed consensus was reached, we did not even have a full board present, nor did Mrs. Strummer hear any of the conversation about board transitioning. When the minutes of the March 10th meeting were approved at the April 28th meeting at one hour and fourteen minute mark on video, Mr. Armstrong said the consensus on March 10th was to be organized at the June board meeting. This is not true. There was no consensus reached that night that I was aware of. There was a lot of yelling and four board members telling Marie and I that this was going to happen. The four board members would not listen to either Marie or I about the suggested IASB Best Practices of Mentorship for Officer Transition. I would caution fellow board members to make sure the Open Meetings Act is not violated in the future. The March 10th minutes we voted on in April reflect the consensus was to continue the conversation at a future meeting. The board agreed to vote on the transition plan at the June meeting. Judy, just keep on the loud, I'm so sorry. Well, I don't know, I don't know what to do. Okay, what part? Just, just, just continue, but I would just shout. The March 10th meeting minutes we voted on in April reflect the consensus was to continue the conversation at a future meeting. The board agreed to vote on the transition plan at the June meeting. Mr. Armstrong, this was not the board consensus to vote on the transition plan in June, but just to discuss. Also, the minutes of the April 28th meeting reflect under transition planning, Board Secretary Armstrong wanted to make the community aware that at the March 10th meeting, a discussion took place regarding board transition. The board is considering appointing new officers. The discussion will continue at the June board meeting. This is hardly sharing relevant information with the community about such an important topic. Never has the community heard a discussion on this topic discussed at the board table until the June 16th meeting. At the June 16th meeting, the full board had an opportunity to tell the community what their plans were concerning board transition. The only discussion you heard was Mrs. Charlton and I expressing our concerns of having no transition plan. Interestingly, no other board members spoke up at the board table about this topic. If Mr. Armstrong and others thought that the board needed transitioning, why didn't any of the four board members share their thoughts with the community? Since there was no discussion, no transition plans were formed. There was no transparency. The meetings of the March, April, and May board meetings were not, excuse me, the minutes of the March, April, and May board meetings were not posted on the district website until after the June 16th meeting. So, the public had no resources to access any board information or to keep the board accountable as we promised accountability when we were elected. You have heard the board did follow ISBE regulations. However, I do not know what the ISBE regulations were. However, what I do know is that we heard Mrs. Charlton tell us that she called the IASB for their best practices. The IASB suggested shadow senior board members so they were ready to assume officer positions next spring. According to what Marie Charlton told us on June 16th, the IASB had never heard of a board removing its officers midterm. You have also heard that the board acted in compliance with Open Meetings Act throughout. Well, I think we have all heard now that there were apparently many discussions happening that I was no part of. The board chose to recraft specific board policy to remove officers. Joel Price contacted the district's attorney about how to draft the intentions of the board. Our attorney gave several options for best practices and provided several scenarios. Marie Charlton and I told the superintendent that we wanted all the options on the agenda for the board to be able to have all options in front of them after there was a discussion. However, the majority of the board chose to craft their own policy to remove existing officers immediately and never told the community why it was doing this. I have come to find out that the attorney fees amounted to $2,241 for this policy change. Why does the district have to pay so much money to remove officers? Four, four board members voted to accept a resolution that stated to ensure continuity of experienced board membership, the desire to transition officers whose term extend beyond 2021. Yet, when the vote came up to elect new officers, Joe Price was elected president. The majority of the board did not even follow the resolution that they had spent over $2,000 on and then voted to approve it. Mr. Price's term expires in April 2021, not beyond 2021 as the resolution states. After the new offices were voted in, Marie Charlton brought up the fact that the board did not follow the resolution that had just passed. Joe Price then stated that he had discussed this with the attorney, however, he did not share any of that conversation with the rest of the board. But, Mr. Price did state that his intention was to teach the new vice president the ropes of the office so she would be able to lead soon. This is unbelievable, since this is exactly what Mrs. Charlton and I suggested at the March 10th meeting. After the June 16th meeting, several people approached me concerned about the sudden change of board leadership and asked me what strengths and talents each new board member brought to the table. I was honest in that I didn't know that there had never been a discussion at the board table in closed or open session that I had been involved in that addressed any transition or any strengths and weaknesses or willingness for serving. Had I been included in these conversations, I could have contributed valuable feedback, and perhaps the June 16th meeting wouldn't have turned into the sideshow that it became. The lack of transitional planning is embarrassing. No information was supplied to the public, and no discussions ever occurred in open board table until the June 16th meeting. The only discussions that ever occurred were at the March 10th meeting that was not televised. The public was never, ever informed. In the end, the board didn't bother to explain to the public why this happened the way it did. Mrs. Charlton deserves the accolades of continuing to move the district forward the past eleven years with her leadership, and she also deserves an apology for the way the board pushed their transition plan through to to specifically remove her as board president. By telling the public to now trust us and to hold us accountable without offering any explanation of what occurred, Joel and Gary know well, that is the way the old board used to say. And how did that make you say when they said it? Trust cannot be demanded, it is only earned by your action. Don't insult the community's intelligence. There should be an apology from the board to Mrs. Charlton.
I need us to pause. We have a sound issue that we need to figure out. I don't know what to do, like the public is gonna have a hard time. I mean, this is a really important meeting, not just for the topic at hand, but the transition planning for next year.
We're trying to go to speak at where they can hear me.
I think that they did hear you. I was getting texts that they were, but I just think this is gonna be an issue for the rest of the meeting and I'm not sure what we can do. How about the sound? But we have to address it.
Jeremy? Can, can the microphone be moved closer to the...
It can, but then you won't be able to see everybody.
I think at this point, I, I, okay, the conversation is important. Yep. I can move to the sound room, Judy, and that's just fine, but I think we need to be able to hear.
What?
I agree, I think hearing is more important, even if we have to state our names.
Yes.
We're speaking so that the public knows.
Sorry Judy, guys, I just...
That's fine, just, uh, just take a moment and readjust the, uh, recording equipment and see if that makes a difference.
And how do I know what was said was heard?
I was getting texts that people are hearing you and if they did hear you, I was telling you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I'm sorry if I interrupt everyone with my no, no, no other talk. So I'm hearing some feedback that, Jeremy, they're hearing you, so can we turn the, the camera around so the microphone faces us? Is that against them? Where is the microphone?
Microphone's here.
Oh, it's right there? Okay. That they did. Sounds like there's background. That's happening.
Do you feel like we're in a position to move forward with the meeting? Are there any other board members that have comments to make?
I'm going to. So our, now, um, our community is asking for transparency regarding the board leadership changes. Um, I've got my mask so I can be able to talk to you, uh, so you can hear me. Um, five of the seven board members agreed that we needed more leadership and two did not. Really, oh, now I'm hearing there's no sound at all.
Um, so, I apologize for the... So the microphone is, is cutting out at a certain level that's too low, when there's not enough sound, it actually cuts out.
Okay.
So the microphone that's on the computer is keeping up the volume, but the problem is the compute, the computer microphone is very loud. And so that's what's causing the problem, so competing versus it being too quiet and then the microphone giving us too much feedback. I turn down the microphone on, on this, every time you take a break, the, the microphone turns off. And I haven't found, I haven't found, so, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
But as long as you keep talking, the volume is better, not a word.
Okay. I'm gonna read starts.
All right.
All right, sorry guys. Um, all right. So, so, public is asking for transparency, which I think is a very fair request, um, regarding the board leadership changes. So here is some transparency. We had five out of seven board members agreed we needed board leadership, new board leadership, and two did not, which is a very difficult place for a board to be. We'd like to find a middle ground as much as we can, especially for very important matters such as leadership. Um, the board wanted to be respectful and honor those who were impacted and disagreed. As a result, we created a distraction last meeting from the important work that we really have to do. I have served on this board for the last year and my husband served for about eighteen months before me. During my time on the board, we have not made much progress on important issues. So for example, we do not have a strategic plan as a district, we have a deficit that we have not addressed, we have an overcrowded elementary school, uh, we have three contracts, we have no employees under contract right now. I am so disappointed that this transition is creating a new distraction and drama because we have a lot of important work ahead of us. Thank you for voicing your concerns and public comment. I'm happy to talk with anyone from the community and I hope that we can move forward in a better way.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm gonna have to say something. I was hoping not to speak at the meeting, but, uh, continuously being attacked with inaccurate information is not something that, uh, I can be quite about. Um, I have served on this board for almost ten years. I have never done anything dishonorable or against rules in any way, shape, or form. I have acted within, within the rules of the I A S B, within the rules of the Open Meetings Act, of contacting individual board members and discussing items with them. There is absolutely nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, that's exactly what the I A, I A S B tells you to do. That's what I did. And I, I'm sorry, I, I let you speak, I let you speak.
Don't do that.
No, well, let me speak.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, I did everything within, in accordance of the rules. Um, it became clear to me after that February meeting that Mr. Price talked about that, uh, that the, the change needed to be made. I'm very, very sad that we had to do that to my friend Marie. Uh, I never wanted it to come to that in any way, shape, or form, but unfortunately, we were, we were forced with that agenda. We were hoping to make it a graceful exit. It became crystal clear to us at that March tenth meeting when Marie also raised her voice during that conversation. So the board had to take the action that it had to take in, in order to move this district forward. Dana brings up a, a great point. There are so many other topics we should be spending our time on, Dana. Absolutely. This, this, um, transitional progress, this transitional plan should have gone smoother, but unfortunately, the minority of one didn't allow that to happen. So I, I'm sorry to the community. I, I think it was very bad for the meeting and, uh, hope to never have to have one like that again. It's not what, uh, our plan was, it's not what should have happened, but I'm certainly not gonna sit here and be attacked. Um, Ms. Wilson, you said a couple things during your, your, your thing that I'm gonna bring up. You said that Marie said I called her on the day of the meeting. I did not. I called her twenty-four hours in advance, the day before the meeting, so she had proper time to prepare. And you know she did because she came to that meeting with I A S B guidelines and regulations. And I did that because that's what you're supposed to do as a board member, to make sure that you fully inform all of your fellow board members as to a topic on an agenda well in advance of the meeting. I am, I am tired of this drama. We need to move on from it. But I am not gonna have my reputation besmirched. I'm not. I did absolutely nothing wrong and the majority of the board agrees with me. I'm sorry that you and Marie don't.
Well, I would like to answer that and say that Robert's rules state that a vote's happened after a board discussion takes place. Even those who may not agree are still given the opportunity to be heard. I have every intention of supporting the board going forward and I realize the board speaks with one voice, with majority rules. However, there were so many occurrences from March, April, and May that needed to be explained to the public. And if you have called Marie, Gary, twenty-four hours before, is that your role to do? Did you call me and ask me? No, you did not. Did you call, you have, you have not called me. Let's see. Few times in the last year, this has happened where, one time you called and asked my opinion and said, "Well, I think," and said, "Judy, I have the major, the board majority." And that was actually at a meeting where you presented Kevin with a list nobody else seen, taking on the role of the board president. You didn't want my opinion because you had the board majority. You did not, not one person called me on this for the March tenth meeting. And if you called Marie Charlton twenty-four hours in advance, why are you calling her and not, not the vice president? Is that your role that you've taken on?
Individual board member, I have the right to call a board member. Anytime I want, Judy, I brought the agenda item to the table. My responsibility as a board member to make sure I reached out to each board member. And Judy, I reached out to you too. I can prove it in my phone records. Yes, I did, Judy, but I, but I'm with Dana. I wanna be done with this now. We wanna continue it on. I think we just be done with it and move on. Let the drama end, please.
I would be happy to let the drama end, but there have been things that have happened. You have called me, I didn't get the call nor the message.
Judy, when I called you, you told me the transition. Tell you good. Exactly what you... Exactly what you said to me on the phone that day, Judy. I called every board member because I wanted to make sure every board member was coming. I even called Kevin to let him know what the topic was. So I'm sorry if you don't remember it, Judy, but it happened.
If you say so, Gary, but other occasions have happened where you have just gone and run with it.
No, that's never happened.
It certainly has, Gary.
No.
It certainly has. Did anybody know about the list that you gave Kevin a year ago?
I was tasked with reading that list as well.
Who tasked you?
You guys did.
I didn't know what went on there.
Judy, Judy, you wanna...
I think restraining, restraining a little bit from the topic that we need to, to stay on. The topic is board statement on transition and expectations moving forward.
My statement is done.
Are there any other comments?
I'm gonna say just one quick thing. Um, I did look back on the March tenth agenda. The transition planning was on the agenda for that open meeting that we had on March tenth. It was not just brought up at the board table and surprise everyone. It was on the agenda. It was an open meeting. Now again, it was a special meeting and Joel has spoken to why it was handled that way. It was to protect the same person that we continue to circle back to. It was because the members of the board, at least in my opinion, the members of the board who were voting with the majority, wanted to provide feedback that we did not feel needed to be provided in front of the entire community out of respect for that officer of the board. We are in a position now where the community is confused and does not understand why this happened. So unfortunately, we have had to go there. And I'm sorry we had to go there. We hoped to do this in a way where we did not have to go there, but we did. So, um, I apologize to the community for the lack of transparency. I will be as transparent as possible in the future, even if it means doing things publicly to people who I care about and respect. Um, so I, I think that's all, that's the rest that I had to say. I just wanted to make sure people knew that it was on the agenda of that March tenth meeting.
A reminder that we're gonna have to continue to be extra loud. We won't make the microphone close.
Okay. I think we can move forward. The next item on our agenda is a discussion on addressing public comment. And Dana, was this a request by you?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let me try to regroup. Bear with me. Um, so one of the suggestions I've, I've thought I've had for a while is if we could change how we address public comments. So some feedback I've gotten from the community and I felt as a board member was typically we, we allow public comments to happen. Right now, it's over email, but generally, uh, members of the community come and speak at our meetings and we choose to not respond at that meeting. And I understand why that policy was in place. Um, we didn't want, sometimes we don't, the community, we don't have all the answers to be able to answer questions from public comment. Sometimes we wanna avoid a back and forth argument over details of things, people can feel differently. But I do think, um, I'd like to kind of tweak how we deal with public comments because some of the feedback I'm getting from the public is that they come and give public comments and then nothing happens with that information. So they might ask a question. So I think we need to clarify how we answer public comments. If we can answer things at that meeting that are just questions and Kevin can, and has the answer and can answer at that meeting, I think we should consider doing that. If we have to research things and, and come up with a board response, I would like to suggest that we have a, a scheduled agenda item where we do that at the next meeting so that we can make sure we're following up with the public comments in a response as a board. Uh, I know sometimes I've heard in the past that we've done it over email. I'm not sure, in my view of being in the board, what, what strategy we use. So I just wanna clarify and offer some, some thoughts for, for you guys to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna just support Dana on that. I think we've heard loud and clear from the public that they want us to be more responsive. They wanna have more open communication with the board. Um, you know, I guess I, uh, have heard the reasons why we don't address public comment immediately in each situation and I agree with those. Um, I also think sometimes the public comment is very specific and might require some research on the point of the board to address. Um, but I do feel like right now the public comments just sort of float into the ether and we're not always circle back, circling back to them either in the next agenda or in a follow-up of some nature. So, um, I do feel like we should explore where we can take that, even if it's a statement immediately to say, "We heard you and thank you," and then there's follow-up afterwards. For the board members who have been around a little longer, is there another method you all have used?
Well, I don't know about another method. By the way, this is Gary again. Um, I don't know about another method, but, uh, I liked Mr. Preach's suggestions. I don't know about an open mic, but I do remember that we had a, I call it a town hall meeting a couple of years ago that was extremely productive. And, and, and maybe, uh, maybe one or two of those put on the schedule regularly would be very helpful for the public to, to be able to engage with us and us with them a, a little bit better. Um, I, I do think questions need to have a specific spot to be answered and that we at board, as board members at the follow-up meetings, we should be asking the superintendent, "What did we do about this? What was said about this? What did we find out about this?" and announce it to our community. I think that would be very helpful. But I, I definitely like that, that town hall meeting that we had a couple of years ago and I, I think having a couple more, you know, a couple of those scheduled per year would be, uh, an important role for the board and the community.
I think that right now, I agree, Gary, right now, there's only one-way communication. So we communicate to the community, they communicate to us, but we don't have that two-way back and forth communication. And I think that that would be really helpful. I think it's something missing for us. So Gary, can I clarify? Did you, so maybe having at the next meeting a follow-up and not, you don't feel comfortable doing it at the meeting, but doing it at the next meeting?
I would wanna always give, uh, the administration and the board members a moment to analyze the information for, for the best answer to the community.
Yeah.
That would be my...
Agreed.
I think sometimes there's a difference between whether it's a board question or a staff question, okay? Um, people can come and have very specific issues pertaining to maybe their child or their school or something that really is more of a staff issue. And so I think that's appropriate for staff to follow up on. Um, but I don't know, we should be interjecting ourselves in staff-level decisions.
Absolutely.
We are supposed to really be up in the balcony like they, like they tell us, right? And, and not in the nitty-gritty. And it is very difficult and one complicating factor is we are televised. And so you don't wanna say something incorrectly, it just goes out right away and it, it really may, might not even be your intention, but it's easy to misconstrue things. It's easy to grandstand, it's easy to do a lot of things when you're on TV. There's our, there are some very downsides to having every meeting televised. It's great that our public can see what we do, but board meetings are not public meetings, they're meetings held in public. They're meetings held in public. So it's not meant to be necessarily interactive. And I think if you look at the village board meeting, you'll see much of the same. People come before the village. They share information and they don't always get a similar response. And I think when we've gone over that at board workshops and board trainings and all of those things, that is really best practice that IESB always provides its members. It's easy to get waylaid. It's one thing when you have somebody who comes and you agree. Yeah, yeah, that's great. But then, you know, then you want to engage them. And, but when somebody comes with a topic that you're not as familiar with or not as agreeable to, then you're going to hold back. And so you favor one comment over another. And then, well, they answered so-and-so's question. Why won't they answer my question? So it gets into a lot of issues that are difficult for a board to manage. And it just, you know, it needs some consideration. I think the board roundtable, that's fine. I think there's been, I don't know, board coffees in the past. There's been other opportunities for discussions with the community that aren't necessarily in this formal televised board meeting setting. I mean, we do have our business that we need to get through here and I don't want to see that interfered with.
Judy, do you have any thoughts? I agree. So can we, can I offer this? Can we commit to, it sounds like we have agreement that we would like to have some two-way communication, town hall or coffees once or twice this year. And can I look up what other school boards do and just present that information briefly? I meant to do it today and then life got a little crazy. So could I present that at the next meeting about a policy or a statement? Would that be, is everyone okay with that?
It's great.
And I can do that next meeting so we can, in the next meeting, maybe we can decide on how we want to move forward?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any more on that topic? Okay, then we'll move on to the review of the budget and finance presentation. And I had kind of asked that we put this back on the agenda because I felt Kim wasn't able to really finish the presentation she had worked on for our March 10th meeting. But then in talking to Kim afterwards, she did, you know, kind of go over that so much change since she prepared that presentation. And then she gave our budget outlook for next year and the budget presentation already. So I thought maybe just to open it up for Kim to review some things that maybe did not yet heard at our last meeting. And then if the board members have any further questions?
Okay. So I do want to check in to make sure people can hear me because sometimes my voice is not that loud. And since part of the budget presentation got cut off last time, we don't want to have to re-present yet another time.
Can you maybe move, are you using the computer?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Yeah, move closer.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can they hear this now?
I think where Jeremy was standing had really good sound.
Okay, so are you, okay, you hear anything? Okay, so I'm going to start. If you want to see the budget, the first half of the budget presentation, you can go to the June, last June meeting. I'm going to start a slide prior to where things got cut off when the meeting, when we had some technical difficulties. So I'm going to review our expenditure assumptions. So in our budget, right now salaries for Wespa and WCMA are still being negotiated for FY '20. And the WTA contract expires at the end of FY '20. So it is expired now. So in this particular budget, I put the salaries flat for FY '21 so that board members, the community, teachers, everyone can see what that would look like. Typically, I present worst-case scenario and we always have done better than that. But I wanted people to see if we did some things to address our deficit spending, what would happen? So if, in this budget presentation, if we could just continued the contract as it is for the WTA, there would be about an additional $399,000 for teacher salaries. Administrative salaries were also entered at zero at a 2% increase. That would be an additional $31,000. Plus TRS costs would also increase based on that additional $30,000. Medical insurance has been budgeted at current rates for one half of the year and a 5% increase for the remainder of the year. One of the things we don't know, we've had lower than previous years insurance costs right now. But that was because things were closed due to COVID. So a lot of people couldn't go see the doctor. Elective procedures were put off. Now that things have reopened, we're starting to see an increase in our expenses because we're self-funded. So again, this is, things are constantly moving. In the O and M fund, we included capital expenditures identified in the five-year capital plan. They include minor masonry work at South, the tractor with mower attachments that we discussed at a previous board meeting, and our remaining life safety projects.
Just those three?
Right, yes. Those are the big things.
Okay.
All right. And then we also budgeted $50,000 in the O and M fund for roof repairs. Joe Smith, our director of buildings and grounds, believes that some repairs will go a long way to make the life of those roofs last without having to do some of the replacements right now. And then we're also, as we have discussed at prior board meetings, we are reserving funds in the O and M fund for the summer of 2021 large projects, which includes the building automation system at the high school. So we need to be able to do some of things. We need to start building up our reserves, which is what we're starting to do, knowing that we're going to spend that money down for these larger projects that have been on our capital plan. It also includes projects that utilize the remaining working cash bond funds and we'll be transferring funds from the working cash fund for that. At the last meeting, we approved the abatement. That was for the chiller replacement. In the fire prevention and safety fund, those are the expenditures that are on the life safety survey. We did receive a school maintenance project grant that will match up to $50,000 of these expenditures. And then additional funding can come from O and M or even the capital projects fund. Again, to start to address some of the budget concerns, building budgets were cut by 10% in this. So all principals were given a 10% decrease in their allocation. And then other supply material accounts were not increased in the ed fund as well. And so we're still working on additional expenditures related to the impact of COVID-19 for the start of the fiscal year 21 school year. Some of these costs will be covered by the CARES Act funding estimated at $132,000. Some of that money will go into the ed fund to help enhance some of our remote learning capabilities. And a good majority of it will go into the O and M fund for PPE, for all the disinfectant and all the different kinds of cleaning supplies and materials that we're going to need to be able to hold in-person learning. And so you can see in the operating funds, our revenues are $27.6 million overall and expenditures 29.3, so a 1.674 deficit. That is better than what we projected in the five-year plan. So we did a five-year plan, I did a five-year plan in March for the board to kind of review where we were at. Then COVID-19 hit just three days after that meeting where schools, you know, on March 13th. And so there are a lot of things that changed as a result. So the five-year plan that was presented in April was updated to reflect some of those changes and showed a larger deficit. And then the budget now, as we're looking at, as I'm looking at where we're going to wind up for the year. And then obviously also without salary increases for two of the main groups, this is where we could potentially end up. So again, we're, it's a moving, it's not a static thing. Our finances are moving and as we get updated information, things, you know, change and we update it. Now, if we rolled those contracts forward, you're going to add another $400,000 to that deficit. So you're going to be at a little bit over $2 million. We're doing planned deficit spending in the O and M fund because we've built up some balances to be able to do some of the necessary repairs and maintenance that we need to do. Does anybody have questions on this part?
So when you say that we are doing planned deficit spending in the O and M fund?
Correct.
Those, that O and M fund is, we're doing planned deficit spending for just three projects?
Well, right, but so one of the things, we have fund balance. We have sufficient fund balance. And so if we just wanted to cover the day-to-day operations, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be spending more than we're taking in. But we have fund balance that we've been trying to accumulate to be able to repair roofs, to be able to do some of the bigger maintenance projects. We need to do parking lots and things like that. So though, that's what that money is there for, is to start to build it up so that we have enough to be able to do those projects.
And I don't know if the public remembers, but I don't know which meeting it's at. I apologize, but we had our building and grounds person come out and talk about some of the big projects that need to be done. And we have quite a list of projects that need to be done. And that using, that O and M fund is the money we use for those projects.
And also our working cash, we issued working cash bonds. We have some funds left in those and we talked about that. Using some of that money, that money needs to be used up and to use that money towards some of these big projects. And then we'll use O and M money as well.
And to clarify for the public, that O and M funding cannot be used for salaries for?
Well, no wait, it can be, the O and M fund is salaries for our custodial and maintenance staff. Okay, not salaries for teachers and administrators and TAs and, you know, things like that. So there's very.
We can't move money around. So just, we have money in the, we have planned funding for the O and M fund, but we can't move that to a different bucket. It needs to stay by law into that O and M.
Well, there are certain transfers and I'm sorry, I didn't, I know you were going to ask that question tonight about which, because there's some sunsetting of when you can do transfers or whatever. So I can't speak to that with 100% certainty about which ones can and can't because they were going to sunset some of that and then I believe they allowed that. But again, we have more projects than we have money for in the O and M fund. So that would not be something I would recommend to the Board of Education to move money from the O and M fund to another fund.
Absolutely. We have more projects than money.
Correct.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Okay, then we have an estimate. I did a projection of estimated beginning fund balances. Obviously, this was, you know, a month ago when we were looking at things. And so anyway, in the ed fund at a little over $1 million, that's better than what we had projected in the five-year plan. But again, if, it's all dependent upon where our contracts settle at. We don't know what our salaries yet are for the last year for the Wespa group. And we obviously then don't know what they are going to be this year. So there's a lot of unknowns right now. And this is the best, the best estimate at this point in time. All right, so revenue projections are conservative. We talked last time about when I had done projections in March, like end of February, interest rates were still pretty decent. Right after I did that, interest rates fell significantly. And then we had the COVID-19, so there were some adjustments to our revenues. You know, obviously we'll probably have more students with fee waivers and things like that that will impact our revenues. We're not sure what's going to happen with our corporate personal property replacement taxes. Even since I did the budget presentation, the state of Illinois decreased our early childhood funding. And so that just came out. So again, things are constantly moving, constantly changing. As we get updated information, I continue to update our budget. Expenditures are based on actions necessary to begin to reduce the deficit spending in the education fund. The CARES Act funding still needs to be allocated to the O and M fund. Since then, Nadine and I have worked on that with Joe and gotten that done. CARES Act funding may not be sufficient for all the expenses related to COVID-19. And we obviously know, we can also use some of that money for the transportation fund, although we don't get that much. $132,000 is not a lot of money. Since I did the budget last month also, we have received word from our transportation vendors. We know what our increases are contractually based on CPI increases. But obviously, they're going to have to provide additional services and cleaning and things like that. That cost is going to be passed along to the district as well. So even this budget of the transportation fund is going to be changing and probably it won't look as good as it did in this preliminary presentation. The 2021 budget is aligned with board and district goals. Provide educational services to students and families we serve. Again, we talked about planned deficit spending in the O and M fund. Life safety and working cash fund spending for capital projects and life safety projects, the funds can only be used for those purposes. So we can't use life safety to pay salaries or working cash fund to pay salaries or benefits, things like that. Property tax freeze legislation is still pending. That is not presented in the budget. Pension reform legislation was still pending, not presented in the budget. At that point in time, the fiscal year 21 state budget form was not available. So I had to do it on the fiscal year '20 and handwrite in the year to post in the board docs. One of the new things too that's going to happen, our student activity funds will need to be accounted for in the education fund. So that, and that wasn't presented to you in the preliminary. And that's a whole additional piece that's going to bump up revenues and expenditures, but we have to kind of pull that out. Also, the education fund balances right now show $250,000 from the Hackbrush donation that can only be spent on educational items for Westmont High School. So when you look at those fund balances, subtract out $250,000, again, that aren't going to be used for salaries and things like that. It's for very specific purposes that have to be approved for the high school. The O and M fund balance also has $156,380 of TIF funds in it that can only be spent for improvements at Manny. So when we do our audit this year, we're going to have those two amounts designated so that they, so that everyone knows that those have to be accounted for separately and can't be used for other things. And then adjustments will be made to the final budget as updated information is received. And then the public display budget was presented to the board on June 16th. It has to be displayed for a minimum of 30 days at the administrative offices. The legal notice has to be published in a local newspaper a minimum of 30 days prior to the public hearing. The publication will be on August 6th, 2020. And then the public hearing and final budget adoption by September 30th. So we'll approve it at the September board meeting. And then we're not sure exactly if we'll be back at the village hall or South School. So I'll do the public, the legal notice as soon as I know where we're going to be able. so I'll do the public, the legal notice as soon as I know where we're going to be able to hold the meeting at. Does anybody have other questions on the budget? Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, and so I think hopefully that answered a lot of your questions about, you know, the five-year plan. Again, it's, it's a kind of a moving, it's a work in progress, and we continue to update it as we get more information. And obviously, one of the things that's been really important, again, is maintaining fund balances, because we were in the situation with this COVID-19 where we weren't sure what was gonna happen with property tax revenue. We received actually more property tax revenue this time than we typically do, just slightly more, which was surprising, I think, to probably every business manager in the state of Illinois, based on what could have happened. People could have, were able to delay their payments and things like that. So, one of the things that was nice in our district was I had done cash flows to run different scenarios about what would happen if we didn't get timely tax payments. And we were fortunate enough that even with our projections, we would have had enough fund balance to be able to meet payroll and things like that without having to do short-term borrowing, not having to issue a line of credit with the bank, or issuing tax anticipation warrants. And so that's why we have a fund balance policy in place for the rainy day, because we all know the rainy day has arrived, figuratively. Right now, it's 90-plus degrees and no rain, but the rainy day in terms of the, of fiscal issues, both for the school district and for, you know, the state of Illinois, it's here. And I'm anticipating that we may see, you know, additional cuts in state funding at some point. Right now, our evidence-based funding, they're, they said they're maintaining, but again, just this week, you know, Linda and I were notified that the early childhood grant had been cut slightly because of fiscal issues with the state. So that's why we, you know, have a fund balance policy where we have, you know, our target is 45%. When we hit 40, we start to work and do things. That's some of why we cut, cut building budgets. The other thing is, we have contracts in place, so we have to adhere to those. And again, 80, over 80% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So that's the place where we can start to make inroads. And so while those contracts are still valid, we have to adhere to those. So, so when we say we haven't been doing things, we have, some of it, we had to wait until we have the opportunity to address that.
Absolutely. And what, we've been not, we've been under our fund balance policy, but per our policy, correct? I know this year, is it just been this year, or was it the year prior that we dipped below our fund balance?
I would have to go back and calculate it.
And then what, for the fund balance, the state has a, has a, has a law as well, and when they step into control of school district, would, do you know, do you happen to know what that percentage is? I know we've talked about it in the past.
Hold on, I- So, in the budget, there is a form, and there's also one in the annual financial report, so in the audit, where the direct revenues and direct expenditures are listed, and then you get, have the difference, and then what the estimated or actual ending fund balances. And so, the state isn't gonna come in unless you're not turning yourself around. So if we got to the point where, like, right now, we have an unbalanced budget, but it's a deficit reduction plan is not required at this time, okay? But if it said unbalanced and you do have to do the deficit reduction plan, then the just, you know, a school district has the opportunity, they have to present a plan to the state about how they're going to right the ship and turn things around. So if you were not adhering to that plan and not making inroads, then potentially the state would, you know, come in and oversee you. I don't foresee our district getting into that point. I mean, there are a few of those districts in, throughout the state, but, you know, we're definitely not going to get there, we're not close to that. But what we need to do, because we're below our fund balance policy, is start to make those changes. You know, we had some, a few years where, you know, our fund balances were actually increasing, then they started to decrease, leveled off, decreased, and then, so again, based, there's, you know, different things that, that happen throughout the year, we maybe get a little bit different funding, we maybe have, you know, an expensive teacher retire or leave, replaced by, you know, less expensive staff, or some things like that that make some changes. Some of our, you know, expenses for tuition, outplaced tuition may change and things like that. So there's a lot of moving parts that can cause those fluctuations year to year. We just need to be mindful that we set ourselves up to be able to maintain, try and maintain a balanced budget going forward, so.
We've had, we've been in deficit, is this year three?
We've had the last two years, and then-
So this will be this?
Yes, but it will, it will not be, at least on a cash basis, as great as we thought. And so, again, we, a lot of changes. So with COVID-19, there were a lot of expenses that we didn't incur the last quarter of the year, and so our financial position will look better than projected.
Thank you so much for, yeah, for going over that, answering all the questions.
And we don't know it when the state funding is affected by the number of children we have returning to school.
That's a great question.
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily affected by that. We get the evidence-based funding model, and so we get that funding model, and I'll share that information with you. I did not have time to put that together for you today.
I haven't had time to do that.
But it's not, so we used to get money, it was so much based on per head, okay? Based on your average daily attendance, things like that, okay? That's not how it works now. So there are different things. Right now, we, because we're, and I always forget where they're, I think we're tier four, tier, the one that had, that is adequately funded. I don't forget one, is one, which is better, one or four, but anyway. So we, we are in what's called a hold harmless state, because we get basically what we've gotten the year before, because we're the tier four funding, okay? And that's $1.3 million, a little bit more than that. So, and the things are calculated based on a number of, of factors, like instructional coaches, do you have full-day kindergarten? Your, kind of what are, some of the, like, dual-language type of things, instructional coaches. There's a number of components that you're kind of graded on, and so that can impact your funding. Because we're in that tier four, and that we have adequate funding, we're kind of in that hold harmless, so we're not receiving more money, we're not really decreasing either. And so right now, the state has said, hey, we're keeping things flat. So it used to be if the per pupil allocation, at one point in my career, it was like $6,159 per student, or whatever. That is not how that works now. And so districts that are not as adequately funded according to the state receive a lot more if you did it on a, than, a lot more from the state than we do. And so that per pupil could be significantly more, but that's not really how it's calculated.
Okay, thank you. So if we had a big decrease in students next year, it wouldn't necessarily affect our funding? Is that what you're, just to clarify, make sure I have the?
Not necessarily, but I would have to go, again, go back and look at all the components and see how much, what that is.
And it's not increasing year to year. It doesn't grow its CPI, it doesn't really-
No, it's, yeah.
... as a dollar amount. So each year that passes, you're really getting less and less.
Yeah, I think one year we got like, you know, $2,000 extra or something like that. So it's very, very minimal. And, and again, right now, the state has said they're going to, you know, keep that funding in place the way it is, but again, that could change, and if that did, then I would think we would, we would get less. So I mean, some, some districts got huge amounts of money to be able to do things several years ago, so.
Kim, I'm so sorry, I have one more question, and you might not be able to answer this, and that's fine. It's a COVID-related question. So when we have, I'm trying to just think through, for our parents when we're doing our contracts, our COVID-related expenses like PVE, our technology needs, and one big expense will be transportation, because of the way, I know we're gonna get into this as a topic coming up, but our fall transition plan, the way that we have to do busing. So how many busing companies would be available in the fall? How many buses we're gonna need with social distancing on buses? Does the state, is, have you heard any guidance from the state on if they're going to increase funding for our transportation with the increase in our expenditures?
So they have not given us any indication of what that funding is going to be like. My guess, again, if they've already started to cut some state grants, that that, that, again, the state has lost a significant amount of revenue. And so somewhere, they have to make that up as well. So I would not anticipate receiving a greater percentage than we've ever received, and I would anticipate less. And so that was one of the things that I just, you know, alluded to in the budget presentation. I already know our expenses are going to be greater than I had projected because of COVID-19, and just, you know, got a preliminary estimate from only one of our transportation companies, not the other one, they're still working on it. So again, very fluid, and things are gonna continue to change.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is strategic plan update and parent survey.
This one?
Yep, there we go. All right, so the strategic plan update, I provide for the board an updated timeline so that others have desire for the board to have something in place at the start of the school year. And we've already taken some steps in terms of, we did the SWAT with the admin team, we did the SWAT with stakeholders, and then, and we're starting the next phase is when COVID-19 hit and kind of derailed us. And I gave me a draft of a parent survey, and Laura made the comment that I gave one draft, said the admin team's gonna look at it, and then the draft I attached, she says, hey, this looks just like the same draft. And, you know, the admin team did take a look at it, but I'll be honest with you, I think with everything going on right now, you know, that the administration looked at it, but probably not, you know, with their full focus as they would if we weren't trying to put together opening plans and so forth. So definitely, there could be some changes to the, to the survey, but out of the SWAT, out of the SWAT, the, kind of the common themes were finances, which obviously Kim talking about that this evening, and she talked about it June 16th. Classroom space and class sizes, primarily at that elementary level, and recognizing that, you know, our, the size of our district, when I first came to the district, there was a challenge putting all the students in the man. And lately, it seems like now the challenge is that miller, trying to get the, the students in. And so it's looking at class sizes, it's our communication, our publicizing of the district, wellness and social-emotional work is a primary topic, and then also taking a look at our students and making sure our students are ready for post-high school. So those were kind of the broad themes. And so then, the, you know, the goal of your survey then is to try to get a little bit more background from the community on some of those areas. And then obviously, we'll continue having conversations with the focus groups and gathering more information before we lock in on the actual goals for the strategic plan.
So are you, are you waiting for questions?
Yes. No, that's mine, my summary.
Okay, did you wanna go later? Okay. So I guess I wanted to ask on the, the timeline, where did you see the parent survey happening? Was that in the July area, or, I guess, I'm just curious, where are you?
Yeah, in July.
In July?
Yeah. And when I get to our return to school guidelines, there's another survey going out.
Yeah.
So the timing of it, we're trying to space it so that we're not one on top of the other.
So this is kind of an out-of-the-box thought, but I know a lot, you'll get a lot of feedback about the back to school.
Right, right.
And I wonder if we can, if it might be helpful to pin down the most important things out of the strategic plan and add it to that survey? I don't know if that's a terrible idea or a good idea, but I think you're gonna get so much response from the back to school. I don't know if it can be combined into one, or if that would be confusing or overwhelming to page, to parents.
And remind me again the timing, are you saying the back to school is first and then the strategic plan, or the strategic?
Right, no, back to school first. We're probably gonna send out the back to school tomorrow.
Oh.
Oh, okay. So we can't really-
But, but, I mean, it can be, obviously-
Well, we don't wanna, that's an important, that's a really timely-
Yes.
-thing you need feedback on, and so I don't wanna impede the process with that.
I agree. But what I wanna say with Dana's comment is I really think it's important, you know, I've read the survey, and I'm, I'm hopeful they'll take it back to the admin, because I do think, you know, whatever their thoughts are on it, needs to be incorporated before we weigh in much further. But I personally think, if you think about finances, class size and space, communication, wellness, and then what happens post-high school, I'm not really sure the survey addresses those items deeply enough. And there's, in my opinion, there's quite a few things on the survey that are confusing. So, for example, one of the questions is worded in a way that there's an option to have people respond that they would eliminate elementary schools, or eliminate the, I just think we need to be careful about how it's worded. We're getting a lot of feedback from the public that we're, A, not being transparent, B, maybe not being as clear as we could be in our communication. I think the community at large, myself included as a parent, is very nervous about what's happening with the district, and I'm privy to a lot of information that's comforting when the rest of the public isn't always. So I think that we have to really take a close eye at this. Kevin, and I hate to put more on your plate or the admin's plate, but I think we need to relook at the survey with an eye towards the state of mind of the community right now, and really ask, ask the questions in a way that really get at what's usable feedback for these topics towards the strategic plan. I, I guess, you know, said another way, I would encourage you to think about what you need to hear from the public, positive, negative, in between, in order to make decisions about the strategic plan. In particular, I think the goals of the strategic plan. Yeah. The other thing I wanted to just bring up, related to the top topics of the strategic plan, I was surprised not to see assessments and grading, the grading systems, like standards-based, or, I was surprised to not see that sort of float to the top. But maybe you have it kind of baked into some of these? I don't know. Do you recall where that fell in terms of our conversations at the workshop that we had, and then at the parent meeting?
It was more of a conversation- It, it was more of a conversation amongst this group than with the larger parent group.
Okay.
You know, it really didn't surface.
At the larger?
At the larger parent group.
Okay. Okay. So I guess the question in my mind is, how are we going to address that within the overall strategic plan? And, you know, maybe it's a six pillar, but that's quite a lot. So I think we just have to kind of keep our eye towards, like maybe that's a measurement function of other topics.
I, I agree, Laura. I think the only thought I have with how to move forward for the strategic plan is that we want to make sure that we're setting the new vision. And I know you have, you know, based on all the feedback you've gotten from the board and admin retreat and the public, I know you've got thoughts on the next vision. So I want to make sure our vision is smart, it's very doable. We're really focusing when we're having hard conversations about our deficit and where we need to cut spending, that we can use our strategic plan as a way, as a litmus test on, on how we move forward, that it's, that's something we can measure every year to see if we're making progress and really focused. I'd rather have it be small, but focused, than have too many things that we're all trying, I know we're still kind of building goals and things we're going to work on. So the, one other question, I guess for August 2020, the goal is to draft a strategic plan and then to also get stakeholder feedback at that time. So that, what are your thoughts about that? What are your plans about how to get strategic, our community feedback, our parent feedback regarding the draft plan?
It depends on.
COVID?
COVID. Because, you know, right now, we're limited to a group of 50, you know, socially distanced. And so it, one, I was thinking of working with each of the buildings, and then having, you know, smaller focus groups based upon the building, so that it's a little bit smaller group, and we get some feedback that way. So that's where I'm leaning right now, unless something changes dramatically.
Okay, so as far as the survey goes, where are we leaving that?
I'll, well, all right, I'll, I'll, you know, we're actually having admin be next Monday. And so one of the things I'll bring to the table is the survey. I think in person will be better. It's less likely to be something that you look at and kind of put to the side. And give some additional feedback, get their suggestions, their changes, their tweaks, and then share it with the board for additional feedback. And then we'll time it though so that there's a little bit of a gap between the back to school versus the, the plan. But we don't integrate our parents with the.
So if a board member has a particular question they'd like to see on it, should they send that to you? And then you can, it can be reviewed and tweaked or whatever, I think. Because it seems like some people want some specific things, and so if you've got an idea for a question, I would just forward it on to Kevin, and then that way some of these things will be, instead of kind of playing a guessing game of.
Right.
What are you, what are you looking for, and is this the right question that you want to see, right?
Yeah.
And I don't really want to get in the weeds personally of what questions are on. I just want to make sure we're very focused with what we're asking, because we get just one shot at this. And it's, I'm nervous that feedback is going to be low, because it's a crisis for a lot of families right now. So I just want to make sure the feedback we're getting is usable. I don't want to get on the dance floor and, and contribute a question personally.
Right. I was avoiding that too, but, you know, we can, we can tweak once you guys take another stab. I, I don't know if there's a way to get, sorry, I don't know if there's a way to get any parent, like, parent glimpse at it? So that, I mean, maybe for the PTOs, like.
Yeah, a volunteer to have. I volunteer, this makes sense, to understand what the questions are asking.
Right, and we're so close to all of this that, you know, it might help.
I know, I know Lindsay has a, her SIP team, I think.
Yeah.
And she uses that group for that very type of thing, like, hey, I'm thinking about, you know, throwing this out to parents, and she gets that feedback.
Right.
So yeah, I think there's probably some focus groups who can kind of get some.
Yeah. Not to slow you down, but just to like a quick gut check with, with a parent or two that says, does this, this is really well and.
Right. Does this make sense?
Yeah.
And there'll be a comments field at the end, so you, if something got left off, then you as a parent can say, hey, I didn't see this addressed, blah, 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 and, and give that feedback as well, which I think is important. Okay, any other conversation? Okay, let's move on to the process and timeline for filling board vacancies. So the board has received a number of applicants for the two open positions, which is good. I think it's probably of their various board vacancies we've had. We have more participation than, than we've had before. So that's a positive thing, that people see our board meetings and still want to come and participate, so.
Gluttons for punishment.
I know we were leaning towards maybe doing interviews at the 21st, or possibly, would it be next week?
21st is two weeks from today.
21st is two weeks, but we have.
If you want to do a separate special board meeting, right, that would be next week?
Yeah, we, if we want to do a special board meeting for interviews, I mean, right now, we have a number of them, so, I mean, you don't want to have a four-hour, you know, board meeting. So we, we could break it up and do some next week, and some at our 21st meeting, and then decide, you know, after that, maybe in, at the first meeting in August. That would still put us at our, our 60-day timeline.
You can see under my mask, I was making a face. I mean, as much as it would be, I think, a lot to go through all of them in one night, I personally feel like, in fairness to the applicants, doing them all on the same day makes a lot of sense. I mean, if one of us is gone, or somebody's had a bad day that day, I mean, each candidate is getting exposed to the same climate, I guess, and I, I just feel like it's easier for us even to compare and make a decision if we see everybody at the same time. But that's just my personal opinion.
I, I agree with that, Laura. I think that makes sense, that in fairness to the candidates. Maybe, so these candidates have sent in applications?
Correct.
Okay, so when are you going to send it out to the board to start reviewing them?
So, I mean, I can assemble and forward them on to everybody, you know, in the next day or two. And then you would have that background information. And also as a matter of scheduling and the candidates' scheduling, you know, I could say we want to hold it on Tuesday, but, you know, they might not be able to make it. So we may have to make some adjustments, you know, to that. So is the consensus that we do it all in one meeting, or two meetings?
I think to do it all in one meeting, and then if there's exception that needs to be made because of a candidate's schedule, then that's the intention. I will say, I will not be at the 21st meeting, so if, I didn't email them. If we could, just because we're a small board right now, if we could consider another day other than just the 21st as our interview day, I appreciate that, but I understand if that can happen, I'm flexible as well.
I would be open to trying to schedule an additional meeting, just for the purpose of reviewing that. I think it's an important decision, and to try to preview it, all the other business would be difficult, but I, I, I'm with Dana. I mean, I could absolutely be here for the 21st. I'm not sure what my work schedule says for me next week, but I will, I will try to make whatever day possible work, but I will let the board know what that is in the morning when I get back to my work schedule. And in fairness to the candidates too, I mean, just because we say, hey, next Tuesday, doesn't mean we're available next Tuesday.
Should we consider putting it on the first week of August instead of doing it next week? Would that be easier for your work schedule to have some more advanced notice?
Well, it's always easier for my work schedule to have more advanced notice, but how important is it that we get two more bodies in the room? I think, I think that, that's a more important focus.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Is your schedule still Mondays, you're?
I'm always up on Mondays, yes.
So would a, would a Monday work?
Are we talking like next weekend?
That's what, that's what I'm assuming we'd be talking, or the following Monday. Are you rounding the 20th? That it takes off.
So on the 13th, Monday, the 13th, I'm available in the meeting time. Same here. And Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't know about the rest of my week, I have to, I didn't, I don't bring my work phone with me.
Monday, I could do Monday.
Do you do Monday? You could do Monday?
Okay.
I'd say reach out to the candidates, Kevin, and see if I can do Monday, a little time, time of 6 o'clock start. And we'll give each candidate a certain amount of time. Is that, is that what we did last time?
Yes.
Will we be able to meet prior, just for even 15 minutes, and just discuss the procedure from myself and Sue?
I can send, I included, there's an attachment in Word docs.
Yes.
And it has sample questions, but I probably have the questions from the last time we appointed a board member that I can include in Friday's update, so that you can preview those. I would recommend the first thing the board does is lock in on the questions they want to ask every candidate. You know, so we'll need time to begin the meeting for that process.
Is there any applicants that you're providing?
Well, right now, there's a total of six.
Wow, that's great. So there's, one of the public comments was talking about transparency for this particular process. So I just wanted to state that in the public comment, our public content area of our agenda tonight, there's a policy on how we deal with board vacancies, as well as a really nice checklist of the process of how we, we go about this. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of the process, and that it's all, all out there for everyone to review. So one of the questions that was asked in public comment was about how, how we're going to prioritize. We've got six candidates for two positions. So in the checklist, they talk about develop a list of qualifications for the appointment, and they give some guidelines, which are just general guidelines for being a board member, like being a U.S. citizen and being over the age of 18. But I wasn't sure if we wanted to talk about priorities beyond that. One thing I would like to state on camera is that we have an election coming up, where there's going to be five seats, five. So that as much as we would probably love for all six applicants to be on the board, we can only choose two. And I would just really highly encourage folks that don't make it this round to consider running in the election, because we need, it will only be Laura and I for sure that will be on the board, and we need a strong board coming behind. In fact, on the checklist, they talk about an IASB publication about recruiting schoolwork candidates. And I'm going to order that and read that, but I'd like that to be put on our agenda as we get a little closer to the election, so that we can make sure that we're doing our best to recruit schoolwork candidates, given those five seats that will be, that will be open.
And just to underscore Dana's point, so I think, you know, what she said without saying it is that the vacancies we're filling in the next month or so, even those positions will be up for election in this spring.
There will be one two-year term, which was Mr. Rudy's position, and there will be four four-year terms.
One two-year and four four-years. And a typical term is four years.
Four years.
Four years, right.
Okay, so Kevin, if you will reach out to all the candidates
Sure.
and start assembling.
Timeline of interviews?
Timeline of interviews, and I would say probably, I think we scheduled last time like a half hour, you know, for, for conversation, and sometimes it went quicker, sometimes it went to have longer, depending on the candidate and questions and stuff. But everyone will be getting the same battery of questions, so that we try to be uniform in what we're asking and have equal weight.
Kevin, do you mind also sending out the interview questions that we used the last time? Because we'll need to decide pretty quickly.
Yeah, I will send.
Okay, any more discussion on that topic? All right, then let's move on to discussion topic, Illinois Return to School Guidelines. So the IP sent out the guidelines for return to school.
And, and again, just to stress, like for our district, you know, the health and safety of our students and staff, that's our primary goal. That's our number one guideline that we're following. We want to make sure that we have meaningful learning experiences for our students, focus on social emotional news, and then try to have, you know, consistent things to build on. When you look at the guidelines, just some of the highlights, and it's interesting, because when you read the guidelines, it seems like there's some leeway, you know, like the six feet seating, and it says, I think it might say the Gallage 46 or six feet one possible, and the face mask, and the paid public health, you know, we're also having meetings with paid public health. And they said, to be very conservative, and they said, you want to maintain six feet. And rationale they gave us is because if you're, if a teacher's in a classroom with students, close contact is considered being within six feet for longer than 15 minutes. So if you have students that are closer than six feet, and somebody gets tested positive, you know, for COVID-19, the entire classroom and teacher has to go on quarantine. If everybody is six feet and everybody's wearing masks, only the individual definitely receives the diagnosis, has to be quarantined. The rest of the class can continue to operate immediately. So we're going to take that conservative approach.
Absolutely.
We're going to maintain six feet. The other thing that I'm anticipating with the guidelines is that they'll be tweaked before we get to the start of the school year. One such tweak was originally the IP said a face shield or mask was appropriate. They have since sent out updates to school that are saying masks, you know. And so there are certain shields that can pass, but, you know, again, we're going to be focusing on the, on the masks. The schools are kind of, you know, developing their guidelines and kind of what it's going to look like. Our goal is to try to get kids into the building as often as we can. Lindsay and Tim shared with you kind of their thoughts, what they're looking at, based upon, you know, the first run-through by the board. They're, they're sure going to run, make that public tomorrow, you know, so they just wanted to see the board's response. But we think we can get our, all our K-5 students in school for full days, five days a week, if we take a look at our buildings differently. And so if we focus on K-1 being at Miller, K-5 being at Mandy, we can have smaller class sizes. We have enough classroom space. We can social distance the kids, and we can get all our kids going and not have, you know, you know, some districts are again an AD schedule, after-school tens one day, then the next day, the other half attends, and so on, you know, so. But we think we can do that, you know, possibly using some staff creatively, but we think we can do that. The junior high is still working on theirs. They think that they can get all the students in, but not necessarily for full days. So they're still kind of working on what that looks like. They need to run past Kim and I, and we use Dr. Westway. They need to run past Kim and I, and we use Dr. Westway. High school, I don't think I, well, there's one district I think. It's just, it's more to do with how many classrooms they have versus the size of the school. But the high school, it looks like we are, that's where we're going to have an A-B schedule, where kids are going to be attending, half the school attends one day, the next day, the other half attends. Wednesday's a be cleaning, remote learning, and then Thursday, Friday, repeat that pattern. And so it's a, consider an A-B schedule.
Can you say that again, Kevin, so it would be A students, then B students, back to back?
Right. But that, that depends on, here's one of, here's some of the things. Like if you look at the guidelines, they're recommending that you don't mix cohorts.
Right.
And so, you know, so if you went A-A,
Right.
then you have the same group of students coming two days in a row, then you're cleaning your building.
Right.
The problem with that is the amount of contact time, like the gap between being with a teacher, you know. Well, like the B group, they don't see their teacher until Thursday. And then the A group won't see their teacher again until Monday, you know. So trying to balance that, we're looking at sanitizing backpacks that the students will be wearing, like the sprayers that will get sprayed out of the room. And so once we get that, we'll see how long it takes a custodian to sanitize the room. If we think we can do it at night and get the building ready, then we'll be able to do that schedule. If we're not going to be able to sanitize the rooms appropriately, then we'll have to go to A-A.
What is your idea on being creative with the teachers? Because I see the teachers teaching during the day and then having to do remote learning out of those who's, parents who don't want their children to come. How creative can that get? And what do we do for the teachers that are having to do double work with that?
Right. What the plan is, and we still don't know, like, one of the survey questions is, will you send your child to school? You know, because we know, other districts have been right about twenty percent of their parents will say, until there's a vaccine, I'm not sending my child. So then the question becomes, are we mandated to provide an education? Should we provide an education? But what we're looking at, I refer to it as simulcasting. So there's a camera in the classroom, and one of the teachers teaching the kids who are present, they're also teaching those students who are at home. So that we don't have a situation where teachers are doing lessons for the students who are there and then preparing remote learning and doing Zoom lessons for kids who are at home. For one thing, we have a, but after that, I don't think, because I'm a T.A.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, when the COVID is due to hit again and parents are back home without jobs and don't have childcare and things like that, I don't know how you could get all the kids functioning in class and over here and give each one the attention that they need. I don't know if that's even possible.
It's going to be a challenge. And the one thing also in the guidelines, and I should have mentioned this, that you have to provide, and I think this will be changed from what we had in the spring. In the spring, it was kind of like these minimums that you had to be for providing students an education. I think the remote learning this year is going to be minimum five hours. And that five hours, though, is a combination of, can be a combination of in-person, remote learning, students working independently. And so, you know, for those students who are at home, we're still going to have to provide that five hours. And, you know, the challenge, you're right, the challenge is those students who, and granted, small percentage, but still that can engage, you know, while we're on the remote learning. And that's what we're still working on and how do we, you know. Most of our families do have dependable internet. That's one of the questions we'll be asking yet. So that doesn't seem to be the case, we're able to provide devices for all our students. In some cases, Judy, it's, you're right, it's, if a parent has job responsibilities or other responsibilities, it's difficult for them not to, you know, work with their child, you know, to make sure that their child is focused, so.
And what do we do about gym class?
The, well, first of all, we won't have locker rooms available. So basically, PE is going to be activities that kids can do without changing. So it might be a lot of walking, you know, those types of activities. You really can't do team sports per se. So it's going to be pretty limited what they can do, but there are still some things to be done.
So can we plug in the elementary gym teacher somewhere? If we are going to have gym as we know it and not knowing how many children would be participating other than an outside activity, or?
That is part of the plan, to utilize, like, PE teachers a little bit different. That might be something that we do remotely. You know, the expectation is that the child is doing things at home, and then it will repurpose the PE teacher with our students in school.
So it's very possible an art teacher and a gym teacher would be doing remote learning for just a third grade classroom or wherever they need to be plugged in?
I thought that the, I thought that the specials teachers, correct me if I'm wrong, were rotating to classrooms at least at the elementary level.
Right.
So kids were staying in the same classroom and an art teacher was coming to them to try to keep the cohort of students together? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the plan, is that art comes to the classroom versus kids move into a space.
Okay.
But there still might be, we're looking at that specials time, and there still might be ways to also utilize those teachers.
And what about the kids' lunches? The kids that bring their lunches from home, I realize that the food service is going to take a hit and then they're going to do sack lunches probably. But is there any feeling on the kids that bring their lunch from home as far as, I don't want to use the word germs, but for lack of better word, we kind of don't know where that's coming from either. But yet they're eating in a classroom six feet apart still?
Not to mention that there's a lot of kids who rely on school lunches and use school lunch programs for their nutrition. Another issue, I think, that, I mean, I know there's so much to cover, Kevin, and I know, I think we need to say that the June, in the June 21st meeting, we're going to go through the plans. Or sorry, July, I'm off. The July 21st meeting, we're going to go through the plans in more detail, is that right?
Right.
Okay. But I think the allergy issue is also something with lunches.
That's, that's something we're working through, the allergy piece. Where our frame is already working on, like, more of a, for lack of a better term, portable lunch. And we do know, one of the questions it's going to ask families, are you going to provide your child with lunch? Or are you going to be relying on the school to provide the lunch? So that we get an idea of those numbers as well. But, right, all those things we're working through, because, right, you know, kids are bringing stuff from home, you know. And the transportation piece, you know, we're, we're going to find out how many families are truly reliant on our bus service versus, you know, in most years, it's convenient. But yeah, this year, I can pretty much have, because we're going to have limited space on buses, you know, so.
And the bus company may not have additional buses or staff to be able to accommodate our needs. So those are, there are some constraints based on that. And I think I found, one of the things I wanted to comment on, Judy mentioned the prediction of a resurgence. So a real resurgence would mean, you know, whatever plans we have for in-person learning could be pulled back. Is that correct?
Right.
So, you know, we can plan for every scenario, but the reality is, we're trying to get as many kids back to school in the fall every day as possible. Probably not pretty possible in every building, but we do have to also plan for the fact that if things, if there is a resurgence, we might be back to remote learning October, November, we just don't know.
And for our special needs students, we're looking at something a little different than the A-B type of schedule. We're looking at having them in school
Letting those
More frequently.
Right, right. Those kids are at risk, need additional support, right. They would be in school more frequently in order to receive that support. And then we're weighing down, we're supposed to, I think we're supposed to get it, we're supposed to get this lead. But the IPE is developing remote learning two point oh. And then that's supposed to provide districts with better guidance in the event that either, you know, we are completely on remote learning, is there a possibility a grade level or building is on remote learning, but other buildings are still operating? So we're looking for that guidance so that we can finalize plans with that.
And so I know you said that Lindsay and Tim are going to be sending out the elementary plan to families tomorrow. I do think a lot of families tuned in tonight because they, there was an anticipation of a specific discussion around elementary schools. So I just want to, like, pause and say, I think that was probably a misunderstanding that we were going to have a more, more conversation around that tonight. But I did also want to just repeat what you said, Kevin, in case people missed it, that the plan that Tim and Lindsay have proposed, and I'm also restating it to make sure I understand it.
Right.
Is that K through one students would be able to attend in-person school every day.
Right.
But they would utilize the building that is currently at Miller, basically.
Correct, right.
And then two through five would be able to attend every day in person, but they would utilize Mannion's building.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to again ask a clarifying question for purposes of the board. As you looked at options, was that the best option to get all of the kids into class every day? Or was that really the only option to get all of the students into in-person learning every day?
To have our K-five students in school five days a week, that's the only way we can do it.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
Yeah, if we, if we wanted to go with, you know, going with Miller K-five, Mannion K-five, we're looking at an A-B schedule. So half the kids would attend, you know, two days a week. So, and if you look at the IPE guidelines, they stress the importance of number of students getting into the school. You know, it's really critical for those students, and so that's why we prioritize that came up with what we think is the model that we're going to accomplish there.
I'm looking forward to hearing their presentation, everybody's presentation on July 21st. But I think that in particular, the details of that plan will be very important to the community. And, you know, I know, as you said, they're planning on communicating tomorrow and their conversations with individual families and the groups that the principals work with directly will help people through that transition. And obviously, that's going to be, you know, a big conversation on the 21st. And I appreciate their efforts and creativity and your efforts and creativity to try to get our youngest students back to school five days a week.
I would just like to add a clarifying point. So the transportation is, and the routing is a big component of this. And so that information is currently with our transportation provider to make sure that that can logistically happen.
That K-one
K-one, right.
So all of that is sort of being figured out?
This is not a set in stone thing. So I don't want to walk away with, this is absolutely, this is a plan and we're still working out some of the logistics of that to make sure that, you know, and again, we'll help with the survey of what students need transportation.
Right.
Do you need to let the bus companies know with the number?
Well, they're working, they have, they have all the, all the students by grade level and address. So they have all that information, knowing that this is what we would like to, this is a possibility. So they're putting all that routing together. Yes, they're, yeah. To make sure that they can handle it, yeah.
So I just want to say, I just want to thank the elementary principals for getting this as a preview of what we're going to get on the 21st. I also just want to state the obvious, that all of this planning is a no-win situation for schools. It's a no-win situation for the board either. Because, and as a parent, it's a no-win situation for me, as a working parent. We, no matter what options we come with, to provide the best option there is, there are going to be options that are not the best thing for particular families, maybe for my family, frankly. And it's going to be tough. The things that we've thrown at teachers and the things that we will continue to throw at teachers are going to be very difficult. The things that we're going to throw at parents, the things we're going to throw at children and administrators are going to be very different. This is a really no-win, someone is going to lose, it's just a really difficult situation. So I want to ask that we have grace on ourselves, no matter what role we play, if we're teachers, administration, school board members, district staff, parents. Parents, that we have grace on ourselves, because this is not what any of us want and we're going to all try our best. I'm already seeing some feedback and I just wanted to say that thought out loud. One of the things I would love to hear on the 21st, kind of getting a peek at what's to come, is the social emotional piece, and we kind of touched on this with trauma as well. So our kiddos may have had wonderful time off of school, they might have had an awful time off of school, depending on various situations. And also, I think, in addition to the COVID trauma, we also have, for this plan, if this actually works out, the trauma of starting a new school for a lot of our students. And so how can we help ease the transition? How can we be really thoughtful in making sure when we're switching schools that we're allowing our kids and our families to be as comfortable as we can? And I just want to echo Judy's thought. I, I, I read the sixty-five pages of the guidance and all I thought were the teachers. And I really want to make sure that we're not only doing our best for the students, but we're really doing the best for our teachers, who are in a really tough spot, that we're protecting them, their health, that we're protecting their health and their safety, but we're also having fair expectations of them, especially when we have to talk about combination of doing e-learning or televised learning on top of teaching in students. I want to make sure we really prioritize our staff. And, because we can't be all things to everyone. It's impossible in this situation. So I think we need to make some hard decisions on how we can do the best that we can with all those things. We're not going to nail a hundred percent of students that are at home and students that want to attend part-time and students that want to attend full-time. We're not going to be able to do all of those things perfectly. So we're going to have to make decisions on what we prioritize, so that we can keep our staff sane. Oh, I also was hoping to hear a little bit about, a public comment was made about movement. And I, and I was thinking of out, making sure our kids are moving and being physically active. But I also was curious on how to use outdoor spaces. I know that, I'm sure that's a conversation
Right.
among our admin.
We are, we are going to, especially at the beginning of the year, you know, weather's nice, we are going to use outdoor spaces. Also for band and chorus, because the social distancing is greater for those activities because of how you have to protect the boys or with your musical instrument. And so whenever we can, those groups as well will be outdoors, or if they can, you know, take advantage of it. We are looking at recess, how we recess, you know, and again, promote social distancing, but allow kids that opportunity to be active. So yeah, we're looking at those things.
And do something like flags be able to happen in the high school with social distancing? But not necessarily a sport like basketball or.
Yeah, what can they give the kids where they can be socially distanced?
The only thing I can think of is flags and.
We are looking at like our different student activities, you know? Some we might be able to do remotely, you know? Some we may be able to socially distance in person, but you know, we're looking at each of those things. We've got some guidance from the I T E say. And we're slowly implementing those things for, for sports. But part of it, part of the flags, that's typically a part of the marking season, we'll have to see if we have a marking season.
I know, I hate to take the one thing away.
Right, right, right.
One other thought I have, and this is more appropriate to address at the next meeting, but is the thought of litigation, and we can talk about litigation in closed next meeting, but of the, the potential liability that we have when we open, we're required to open back. So what's our legal ramifications if we have staff that gets sick and if we have students that get sick? Just making sure we're thinking through.
We're, we've been, I think there's another one, this week and or next week. Hudson Weasley has been having Zoom workshops. And each new guidance comes out from the I T E, so they, they do like a panel discussion. The one thing they did say was that if an employee gets diagnosed, the assumption is they have the debts for. So when it comes to working comp, all those things, that, that would be the assumption. And, you know, they're, they're also saying, you know, when you're seeing the guidance say, you know, again, again, that recommended six feet. And your attorney, we're telling you, six feet.
Okay.
Because again, if you're not taking those steps, you do open yourself up to litigation, so.
Yeah, and I think importantly, and I'm sure you guys are talking about this, but compliance is going to be a huge thing. I know, I just from my own experience having gone through, you know, running an organization during COVID and compliance with masks, compliance with distancing with kids, you know, how, how do we ensure in a gentle way, compliance in a way that is consistent with social emotional.
Yes, developmental.
Yeah, developmental, like I guess as a parent, I want to understand those things. And also as a board member, and I'm sure there are other parents who want to understand how to handle those situations.
So teachers are getting temperature checks every morning as well, because part of it says self-check. And I don't know exactly how to interpret that.
I think self-check applies to like sore throat and other symptoms that only you could identify. And but temperature is obviously something that can be taken externally, so.
What the, the self-check is, it's basically a form. And the parent completes that on behalf of their child, the adult completes that on their behalf, but basically, right? Just says, my child is free of these symptoms, you know? And then we're getting the monitors to do temperature checks. And then the other piece too is, and these are things we're finding out. If, you know, the hope is that if somebody is sick, they stay home, parent teach your child home. But there is the possibility that a child starts wearing a fever during May or arrives at school with a fever. Well, you have to have a special quarantine spot for that child or adult. And then, once the child is removed from the building or developed it, that space, nobody can go in that space for 24 hours. So it can't be cleaned, nothing can happen with it for 24 hours. So now you have to have multiple spots in your building that you designate, okay, this is quarantine spot A. And then quarantine spot B. And then.
The layers.
Yeah.
Wow, this is like requires 10 degrees of logistics. We are asking, we are asking our administrators and our teachers to do extreme logistics in addition to their professional.
Right.
So your comments about grace is super important. Thank you for the update, Kevin.
Sure.
Okay, let's move on to the registration update.
Just very briefly, you know, typically this time of year, we'd be advertising the date or dates for registration. Because of the restrictions we have, we don't think realistically, we can do in-person. So it'll be all done remotely, we're still working on the piece. We still want families to submit documentation that they reside in the district. So we're still working on that piece, whether or not, it's just they send us a P D I of the documents. There's a way to do it through Sky Word, when we say text documentation. We'll still allow parents to drop off documents if they either A, don't have the means to do it through technology. So we'll be getting that information out to our families very quickly so that they can start completing the registration process. And I also attached in public content, dispute of fees schedulers with some questions about dispute of fees. So those are attached, really there's no significant changes to fees over last year, but the fee schedule is attached.
Okay, any further comments on that topic? Okay, Dana, this was another topic you requested, role of the board secretary.
So can we table this? I have some thoughts of maybe one of the conversations we had when we were talking about transition wise, what, what roles we had as officers and if we can make some changes to those. Just to keep things, when there is a board transition in 2021, that the duties are reasonable. But we're, we're already two and a half hours into our meeting, so I would like to table this for our future meeting if you guys don't mind.
So just suggest, you know, the meeting you want to add it to, and then we'll just re-add it to the agenda at that point.
Can I make one quick comment, I know we're running long, but I did want to clarify something that in Judy's statement, she mentioned about the, and this nestles under the role of the board secretary. She mentioned that minutes were missing from the website for several months in a row. And Kevin, can you just clarify that that is not the role of the board secretary, but rather?
That's out of my office and the board's aware of this, I don't know, excuse me, media board. But my assistant, Reema Black resigned. And we're still going through the process of finding a replacement. Again, one of those things, we started interviewing and then it was tabled and I've resumed interviewing at this point. But that's one of those things, is Kim and I are trying to fill that void. That's one of the things that Reema, as soon as the board approved the minutes, Reema then would attach them to our website page. And that was one of those pieces that, you know, we've been having minutes approved, but they haven't been posted on our website, so. We're, we're getting back and swinging back to make sure that they're posted.
Yeah, and I wanted to bring it up just mostly because I personally believe there wasn't any intent on the point, on the part of the board to be, to lack in transparency with the meeting minutes. I think we all sort of fell off track in terms of checking to make sure they had been posted and maybe helping you with a reminder, but I don't think there was any ill-intentioned, I just think that weren't to say.
I don't think there was either.
Okay.
I think it was something that was sidetracked, it just happened in a very.
Very bad side.
Right.
Very, very, Judy, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, next topic is board meeting calendar, and I believe I asked to put this on. I just wanted to know if it was possible to change the August meeting from the 11th to the week before? And if that would be okay with everybody?
So that would be the fourth?
Yes.
Yes.
That's so you don't have to attend that meeting, Joe?
Yeah, not quite, just the opposite.
That is fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Judy, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we will go ahead and make that change.
Yep.
To, to the board's schedule.
And again, right now it's indicating that while it's not bill of call for all of our board meetings, that what that is dependent on us gaining access to the bill of call.
If we meet here, can we get microphones?
We'll, we'll keep, oh yeah, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay, is the high school an option? Like if you auditorium, like a high school, because I know there's, they have the sound figured out, like could that be something we consider? Or is that?
No, I mean, it's a very closed end space and it's really, you know, our experience has been more difficult. I think we just need to.
Figure this out.
Figure this out, maybe we have a mic that comes closer to the board or something, you know, two or three mics that feed into the, into the.
Right. Can we practice our screening between now and the next.
We're going to have sore throats tomorrow.
Okay. We will be moving to closed session and.
Could I request a board report, please?
Okay.
This is my 10th year serving on the C U S D 201 Board of Education. The last five years I have served consecutively. I've worked with three different superintendents during that time. I worked and supported electing a new board in 2009 and watched the transformation from a lacking district to a thriving district, with all of our schools' ratings soaring to local and to national recognition levels. I'm saddened by the board's lack of consideration to keep the public informed on the board's recent reorganization, although we have moved on. I'm also sad that there have been occasions where some board members have not acted to be inclusive as a whole board. Everyone's opinion should be listened to and respected. Unfortunately, there have been times this past year that specific board members' opinions were not asked for or even considered. The latest example is the board reorganization plan. Thank you to the public for putting their trust in me with their vote to make good decisions that affect their children's learning, their taxes, and their community's reputation. It's a trust that I don't take lightly and I never have and never will. It's important to listen, think, and enact. So effective immediately, I am resigning from this board of education. This is a sad day for me, I never envisioned any of this happening, but the events of the last many months leave me with very little choices. Instead, I would like to focus my energies for I'm respected and my opinions matter. I wish this new board every success and hope you continue to raise the bar for our administrators and our schools.
Well Judy, I'm sorry that you came to that decision. We wish you well certainly and.
Thank you.
My comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to. Judy, I am heartbroken, honestly, that you came to that decision, I understand it, I truly do. I respect you tremendously, I think you've been an extremely valuable contributor to the board. I, I, I think we will be missing out on your valuable contributions and the role you play in the community and how you have represented the community on this board. I again, I respect your decision, I respect you, but I'm very sad to be cynical.
I'm very sad too, I never thought of anything like this.
And I, I echo everything that Laura said. One thing that the community should know about Judy is that she just really thinks, and this is evident tonight, that you really think and make your own decisions. You have a really unique perspective that you bring to our board and you're a great person to talk things through with and process with. And I know you'll bring those qualities no matter where you go, but I'm really heartbroken that you're leaving us because you, you really bring a really great perspective to things and we'll really miss you. Can I make one?
Yeah.
Board report?
Yeah.
I just want to apologize for our issues with sound, I know the public has been really frustrated tonight. We have really tried, we also need some grace, and we will do better going forward with our sound. Just wanted to state that.
Okay, all right. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel negotiations and the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Foyle?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Drummer?
Yes.
Liz Bullson?
Yes.